So I'm Dr. Julie Mitchell, I'm the President at JJC. And I'm here actually this afternoon to talk to you about the proposed tuition increase that we've been discussing. So we have, a couple of us have met, myself and Dr. Randy Fletcher, he's the Dean of the Academic of yours, have met with SGA to talk about the proposal for next year, what we're considering. So let me just start, when we met in November, we had shared with the Board of Trustees three options, and it basically related to the funding, the funding stream that we thought we might receive from the state of Illinois. So if you don't know, or if you know, I'll just share with you, in 2016, we received about 22-24% of our state funding, and in '17, we're right now at about 44% of the state funding, and we haven't yet to hear any updated information. We also continue to hear from our legislators, there's a potential for a future stock gap, but we don't know what that funding stream will be, or how much that will be. We've heard a little bit about that we could have a budget for the final two years of Governor Rowner's office, but then we've also heard that possibly not, no budget. So for us, that raises a great deal of concern, because obviously, we're here to serve each of you, all of the students. We have 35,000 credit and non-credit students, and what can we do as administration to make sure that we meet your needs, and then meet the needs of our budget? So what we presented to the Board in November were three options: if we received 100% of the state funding, you know, the potential tuition increase would be $3. If we received 75% of the state budget, the tuition increase could be $16 per credit hour. And 50% of the state budget would put us at about a $27 per credit hour increase. We came back to the drawing board, you know, for the first month out of the box, and I had worked on a realignment with the administration by reducing several positions, not filling several vacancies, to the tune of about $400,000. And then we looked at some of the new positions we were hiring for City Center Campus, and reduced that amount by 100,000. So basically, $500,000, or $2 per credit hour. We also are looking at a new scheduling system that will roll out in the fall. I think there's a soft rollout now, we're looking at some of the class limits for your class sizes, but in the fall, we're going to roll out an updated scheduling system that will allow, so it'll remove the overlapping of classes, so rather than taking a 9 to 10, 10, and then another class started at, you know, 9:50, and couldn't take the classes, we're going to look at that, you know, the class structuring, to allow you to take more classes when you're on campus. So with that, with some of those, some of those options, we actually brought that $27 per credit hour increase down to $20 per credit hour. So that was a significant difference, and then that $16 would go down to potentially $8 or $9. We know realistically, to be fiscally responsible when we budget, to be, I don't want to say optimistic or realistic, and look at a 50% budget from the state. We know that's what we have to do. If they come back this year with a higher percentage, and we received that 75%, the thought was, until we know that we can, we have a stable budget going forward, that whatever we lock in the tuition this year, that we look at potentially not increasing next year, unless truly need be, and we would come back to you, if it would be a nominal $2 per credit hour. So when we got down to that $20 per credit hour, we thought we made a significant difference. However, then we started thinking a little bit more, what could we do? Now, for those of you that are new to JJC, or that have not been here, over the past four or five years, we've actually reduced operational expenses by over $2 million. And then I just talked to you about some recent changes with our, with our scheduling, and what I've done with positions. But we're truly in a position where we have been very fortunate, so many other community colleges have had significant staff layoffs, they've started to look at their programs, and we haven't had to do that yet. But we know July 1st, without a state budget, if we do not have, you know, have this type of increase, we are going to have to do the same thing. So I will speak on behalf of our faculty and staff, you are very fortunate, we have a very strong group of faculty and staff that are committed to your success, just like each of us are. For us to reduce our staff even that much more could be critical, you know, we really have to take a look, a hard look, at where we would, you know, make those reductions. We continue to try and increase our enrollment, and so we need to look at our student development area, so I really hesitate to cut there. The other option that we have is to start closing programs, which again, we, you know, would hurt us, would hurt students that are enrolled, and potentially, these, some of these high-cost programs. So what are some other options outside of that? We're looking at another option for our tuition. So what we are proposing, and I have two Deans with you here today, Dean Patty Zuccarello and Dean Dave Nays, that can answer additional questions if you have regarding some of our differential tuition. So rather than looking at a $20 increase, we potentially could get that, that per credit hour increase down to $15 or $16 by introducing a variable or differential tuition. And whether that would be applied are more as to some of our CTE, or Career and Technical Programs. Those are the programs, what we're looking at, are high-cost to the college, and when you graduate, your salaries or your jobs are typically higher or better than some of the other students, and your traditional transfer degrees, or some of the programs that do not have those high costs. So that's the sheet that you, that you receive during Main Street. So those, so, you know, for automotive, you can, you know, I'm sure you're here, you can ask your questions about automotive, that was one of the programs that we were looking at. But again, when we look, when you graduate, you're typically going to make more than the $10 per, you know, $10 per hour job. You know, we looked at the job placement for those. If we roll out the variable tuition, we're looking at a one and a half times the cost per credit hour for an increase in those programs, only for those courses related to those that have the high operating cost. So not your gen eds, you know, not some of the other classes that you have, it would only be those specific AE type, I think that's the prefix, AE. ASE. So only to those ASE programs. It does not affect your financial aid, we verified that, so you're still, you'd still qualify for financial aid for those courses. And then again, you have to remember, we have a very strong foundation on campus, so within the Foundation Department, I think last year alone, they awarded over $600,000 in scholarships. So I encourage all of you, regardless of your programs, to really reach out to the Foundation Office and check with student development. If we roll this increase out to the CTE, we can then reduce the course, you know, the increase to the credit hours to 16, so we went from $27 to $16 per credit hour. So I want you to realize, this is all due to the state, and we have done everything we can. I have encouraged all the students, SGA, you need to, if you have any contact with legislators, your local legislators, you need to talk to them, they need to hear your voice, the students need to have a strong voice. We are doing what we can, I meet with our legislators continually, we're constantly talking about what we need to do, what they can do to help us, and they struggle too. I was just in a meeting last week, they continue to struggle. So this is where we're at. So we thought today it might be a nice opportunity to meet with all of you, share that information, and allow you to ask us questions, and then share the word, spread the word with other students, to let them know that we are here. If, you know, if they miss me today, my office is in A Building, third floor, you're more than welcome to stop up, send me an email, I've ever seen emails, but talk to us, we need to hear your concerns, and if there's a way that we can help you, we're here to do that. So are there any questions?
Yeah. We heard about this this morning, the old automotive, everybody that was here today. And we don't get why, of course, that we might be making more when we get out of here, but why is that our fault that we chose a better program to go into, that will outlook on us better when we get out of here, that we have to pay more? I'm in there about like 25, 30 hours a week, I don't have enough time to work, I don't have enough time to make the money to pay for these bills, and increasing 1.5 times and system. It's hard, it really is. So of course, we'll make more then, but now, how can I afford this, when they're not making that money now, not for another three and a half years?
Right. Well, and that's what we're hoping, and I don't know if you want to add to that, but that's what we're hoping, where we can help you with.
I'll just add this, and I think Dean Zuccarello mentioned one of, yeah, this is since you're talking specifically about automotive, and I know that falls under Dean Zuccarello's area, and Career and Technical Education, but a lot of it, as Dr. Mitchell said, is based on the high cost of the program itself, and that's what you're going to find with a lot of Career and Technical Education programs. So we've got to be able to find a way, in order to continue to provide students with access to the equipment and all the needs to run that particular program, that money's going to have to come from, from somewhere compared to your counterparts in the General Education courses, where those are typically just lecture courses, right, that there's not the equipment that goes into that, so that's, that's part of it.
The other part that, that we looked at when we were talking about differential tuition is the labs that you have in Career Tech, that you may not have in an English class and a lecture class. So when students are paying on a, on a course, you're paying for the credit hours, but often the contact hours exceed the credit hours. So what we're also looking at doing is finding some way to bring some equity to the difference between the contact hours and the credit hours. Do you know what I mean when I say that?
Okay.
Okay, so I am in the agricultural program, but actually, I'm kind of just here trying to find exactly my path. And the one reason I came to JJC is because you guys offer so many different paths, and I feel that by raising these paths, that you may eliminate people from going towards them and trying them. So like, I'm in an animal science, it would be more expensive to take that course, but it might be something that I want to try, but I might shy away from it because it's a more expensive course. So like, you know, the efficiency of going here might be eliminated by raising that price.
Yeah, and that's a real concern that I think we also have, and I know your faculty have that concern too, because we've talked to them about that too. And I do think the one potential advantage that JJC has here is that our tuition is already set so much lower than our sister schools, that if somebody really wanted to come here and try out an ag class, even if they were paying differential tuition, that would kind of put them kind of on par with what they'd be paying for a gen ed at their home institution.
When you look at the top 20 community colleges, we're 16th right now, which is significant, and as Dr. Zuccarello had mentioned, even with that variable, that differential, we're still going to be lower than some of our counterparts, and so we have that information as well. And even when we increase this year, they're all talking about what their increase is well. So we'll continue, we might move up a little bit, but really, when you think about it across the state, we're still going to be one of the better, better institutions with the lower tuition.
I'm also from the ag department, and so I just have a question, the reason you want to raise the prices for the career and technical is because we teach them like a lab format, right? Because the labs tend to be more expensive?
Right, labs and the equipment.
So would that also be in like the science department, when there's also labs in those kind of courses?
You know, we haven't looked at that yet, that actually came up as a, you know, in one of our conversations, but this year, we really wanted to be gradual, rather than looking at all the courses that had labs, and looking at the science classes, because we thought if we can start this way and look at the, because typically, science classes, they might be part of your transfer degree, and so you're not going to be graduating after your associate, you're going to be going right onto a four-year, not working. So we had to look at that too, and take some of those into consideration.
Hi, how does this look for out-of-district students? Because I personally, out-of-district, I drive over almost an hour to get here.
Okay, well, that will affect your tuition as well, I don't have those numbers with me, but honestly, if you send me an email or stop up, I can let you know what that would be.
Would you guys think about maybe doing all classes that have labs, so it makes them, there's more an equal field to what's being raised, instead of just the classes that are going to have the, the career and technical education courses?
We may, next year, you know, I think this year, there's a lot, and you know, again, it's going to be incremental, we need to evaluate that. You know, when Dr. Nays talked about the, you know, contact hours, we thought of looking at those courses with the high contact hours with the lab, but again, you know, maybe look at that into next year, give us time to really, to really work that through.
Yeah, just to have like an, not to say an equal playing field, but just again, go back to the, everybody has a fair chance, it's not like looking at a bio class and taking that one instead of a career and technical course.
Right, right. So, but if we would have come out with that this year, and said, oh, we're going to charge this group this, and this group this, and I think it would have been overwhelming. And we want, you know, obviously, we want to be here for you, we want to keep it as accessible and affordable as we can, and, you know, again, to be here to support you through financial aid, through scholarships, anything that we can do. We know that if we cancel a program, we lose students, you know, and that's not our goal. And we know to continue to, you know, reduce our staff, that again, affects the students because we're not here for you. So we're trying to do the best, and hoping that you realize that we're here, you know, with your best interest at hand, this is a very difficult decision for us.
Hello, how are you?
Fine, how are you?
Not terrible.
Good, happy Monday.
So, happy Monday. So my question is regarding to, so basically, the whole increase of tuition is based on what the state's doing, correct? That they're basically either cutting back funding to Joly Junior College, or other colleges, whatever the case may be?
Right, all colleges.
And like, let's say, you'll be forced to cut a program, would you reinstate that program back in, once you get the funding, or would you realize that, oh, well, we're doing much better off now without that program, so let's just continue on the way? The reason I bring that up is like, I'm the EMS Fire Science Program right now, I can tell you right now, from talking to other agencies, like FIRE, agencies, paramedics, everything, some of the best, like EMTs, firefighters, whatever, come from Joly Junior College, or like the guy I'm from, Char, Duane, you name it. So my fear is that if you do decide to start cutting programs, those programs won't come back because, well, the students will find somewhere else, somewhere cheaper, and I would hate to see that, because the community will suffer, patient care will suffer, and in the end of the day, that won't benefit anyone. So that's, I guess my question is, will those programs come back if those, if you cut them?
Right, well, that would be our intent, obviously, to bring them back. And again, that's why I said, this is a very difficult decision, we don't want to cut any programs, we don't want to lose our students, you're very important to the college, to our community, EMS, and Duane and Char are fantastic, you know, so it's a great program, not to say that they all are, but that's why we're doing our best, we don't want to, we're doing our best not to eliminate any programs that are going to affect our students. So, but if we had to cut one, we would absolutely look back and see if it's worthwhile, how many students were enrolled, and we'd have to make that decision, because it's, this isn't an easy decision right now.
I'm coming to JJC, and as a mother of three, I cannot just go ahead and have a part-time job or a full-time job, just because this program requires so much time with classrooms, and practicals, and clinicals, and homework, and I mean, the reputation that the, what made me choose this program is just because of the reputation that has in the entire community. Like, if I go to Morris Hospital, if I go to Silver Cross Hospital, and I say I'm coming from JJC EMT program, I'll get hired. But if the tuition increases, I don't know if I'm going to be, I'm going to be able to keep joining, or you know, still in the program, just because I cannot afford to have the tuition at the same time, my kids, and not to have a part-time or full-time job.
What we would do if, you know, once this goes through, if the Board approves, you know, obviously, the Board of Trustees has to approve the tuition increase, and we know which programs are, are going to be affected with a differential tuition or variable, we'll do our best to work with you through the Foundation, you know, through any types of, you know, media that we can get our marketing, or just to get in contact with you about options, what your options would be. So whether that's, you know, through looking at your financial aid again, or if it's actually sitting down and meeting with someone in the Foundation Office about scholarships, I'll tell you, there are a lot of, a lot of scholarships at the college that go left unclaimed at the end of each year, and I, you know, I don't know how to get that out to you, I know we communicate, I know it's in, you know, newsletters and emails. We really encourage you to check out all of those scholarships, we have a great Foundation Board, and they work very hard, we have a lot of donors, it's just amazing, the donors we have. And so if we don't have anything in your area, maybe that's something that we know that we can, you know, reach out to, see if we can start something up like that.
Hi, my name's Corey Jackson, I'm part of the Automotive Services Program major, and I notice here that it's a variable tuition scenario, and especially in your Career and Technical Education courses. So what I, my concern is, I don't, I don't necessarily have enough money, that if this program increases, this is my deal, this is what I'm going to do, this is my dream. If the tuition increases, I, I might not be able to continue that, I might have to take a year off from school, if I get another job, I might just forget, if I was a college general, I might not come back. So my concern is, if possible, that you can extend it to regular tuition rate, is that, is that one of the possibilities you're considering?
Well, it's a balance, and in the six, if we, if we roll out for the Career and Tech Ed programs, then the overall increase to all the courses would be $16 per credit hour instead of $20. So there will be an increase across the Board, but for those, some of those specialized CTE programs, again, where I talked about, where the graduates come out and they're making a good salary as soon as they graduate, those are the types, the high-cost type programs. The equipment in automotive is obviously much more, you know, much more costly than, you know, a standard classroom, and that's what we're looking at. And that's what I'll, you know, I will say that a lot of the community colleges right now are looking at, those high-cost programs, where, you know, it's just more than the typical. When you look at a student who is going to transfer, and they're going to transfer to a four-year, and they're not going to graduate, they won't, you know, they won't be seeking employment right away after their first two years, you know, for those students, that's why we looked at more of the balance, so when you're taking more of your gen eds, and you have that standard increase, they're not going to have that impact as someone who's going to graduate and receive a good-paying job as soon as they're, as soon as they graduate from JJC.
So if I understand correctly, you feel that Career and Technical Programs should be offering more when it comes to this tuition increase, because we, when we graduate, we'll be having more high-paying jobs right off the bat?
You mean, offering paying more?
Yeah.
That's what, that's what, that is a piece of what we looked at when we, when we made that decision for variable tuition, so it's the high cost, it's the equipment, you know, that it costs the college to pay for the equipment for those courses, and then we look at the job placement when you have to graduate.
Yeah, and as Dr. Mitchell had mentioned, I think, another than just to reinforce is, you know, it's, the options that are on the table aren't necessarily ideal options, right? It just becomes a matter of, you know, the increased tuition in certain areas, you know, for the somewhat short-term foreseeable future versus closing the program, right? I mean, so if someone can't afford the tuition increase, but there's no program that exists, right, that's, that's obviously not, that's, that's the, that's the doomsday scenario, right, that's the, that's the option we don't, we want to avoid, so that's what we're trying to explore with the variable tuition options in those particular programs. And these conversations, as Dr. Mitchell said, are happening, this is not unique to JJC, unfortunately, it's all 48 community colleges in Illinois that are having this exact same conversation with their Board of Trustees, with their faculty, with their students, and so on, so, so again, that's just because it's a state issue, crushed, so again, it's not unique necessarily, just our area, unfortunately.
I want to share it earlier, I'm not sure if you were here, we talked about, and that if you look at the top 20 institutions across the state, we're about 16th. So we're doing very well in comparison to all of our peer community colleges, and even with the tuition increase that everyone's talking about, we still will probably end up, even if we move up halfway, we're still lower than many of our, many of our sister institutions. So this is a difficult decision, we have to know that, and this isn't something that we've all talked about, from the finance team, to the Board, to our academic Deans, you know, what we can do to student development, obviously, we look at, we're concerned about the cost of our education, so, so we're doing whatever we can, and that's where we're reaching out to the students, if you have an idea. You know, we want to hear from you, we need to know that, whether or not you're going to support this increase, we're hoping you support it, not because it's, you know, and we realize, not because of what it's going to do to your, to, you know, for your, you know, financial assistance, the cost of the program, but to support JJC, to allow us to not cancel these programs, to allow us to keep the faculty and staff that we have, to move forward, so you have the best education we possibly can, can provide to you. And going forward, if we hear, you know, something from the state, and we do have a budget, years three and four, we'll look back at the tuition, see what we can do, or, you know, potentially lock in, you know, a minor amount for the next couple of years, we don't know that, but that's what we're, that's what we're considering.
One of your concerns with the automotive program was the cost of equipment and tools, correct?
Mm-hmm.
We do, you do know we get sponsorships from multiple of other companies, right?
Right.
So if we were to get more sponsorships from those companies to pay for those schools, would that decrease the cost of tuition for those classes?
Well, sponsorships help us across the campus, not only just with automotive, we work very closely with our Foundation Department, to go out to some of these large companies to find out if they can sponsor the college and help pay for some of the equipment, similar to like Hunter Equipment, and some of the other ones that I know that you work with, with automotive, we look for that across the campus. We have another program, you know, we, I don't believe we have any culinary students here, I mean, we look at our new building that opened downtown, which is probably about 60, 70% is culinary, and then we have adult ed, and we're course development down there, and the cost of that building is significant. In fact, they actually had a course fee increase last year, two years ago, a significant course fee increase to help pay for the cost of their equipment, and we're looking at them for the differential tuition as well. So Chef Mike is very active with donors for their program to help offset the cost, absolutely, but it takes a lot, you know, every, every increase in tuition, you know, it's about $250,000 per credit hour. So when you look at that, even if they're donating to automotive, and it's $100,000, that's only $100,000, we have to look, you know, we have to look big picture when we're talking $16 per credit hour.
Are there plans for the old campus downtown?
The, well, we're renovating Renaissance Center, which is off of Ottawa, and then the hotel will come down potentially in May, and then we'll put a big construction fence up down there, we cannot finish the project until we receive state funding for that building for the...
There's going to be like a parking garage or something, I heard.
There's been talks about a parking garage, which is very expensive, we'll have to see, but definitely an increased parking downtown.
Just wondering about the, the old center down there, I know I took my GPE course there.
Oh, did you?
I think you went there.
Yeah, it's an interesting building, so it'll be nice to see that go down.
I know you just built a very large complex for sports, and your sports don't really bring in money, so is there any thought for the future of potentially doing something like that? Because that can bring in a lot of income, I know they make, they rent out that facility, they continually bring income in, that can help develop and build their college.
Right, we actually are, we have, we have created a revenue generating committee on our campus, we used to have a cost savings committee, and that's how we reduced the budget by over $2 million, and now we have a revenue generating committee to do that same thing, to evaluate revenue opportunities for the college outside of the donors and the organizations that support each program, but the event center, we're looking, we're really hoping to turn that around into a profit center, to rent out whenever we're not using them for athletic events, we're working with communities, we have a facilities rental manager on campus that's working on filling that, we're working with our athletic director to bring in clubs and sports and things like that, so absolutely, we're hoping to utilize that facility to its fullest, fullest capacity.
Well, as, when we're specifically talking about arts and like in music, because that, it's their art center that they specifically use, where they have a concert hall that even in, from my time there, and like recent, recent visit, they updated it, spent over $35 million that they made within that program to build that, and it's money that is continually funded, or funded back into the school itself.
Right, absolutely, well, our finance, our theater is very nice, but it's definitely not what CLD is.
It's quite a quid.
Right, but it is on our master plan, the college's master plan is a future project, but again, it's, it's all dependent on funding. Right now, once we finish the event center, which will open in the fall, we have a Romeoville expansion, and the intention there was to double the size of Romeoville, from 4,000 students to 8,000 students, offering a transfer degree there, so if we can expand enrollment in Romeoville, again, that generates the necessary revenue we need for the college. The City Center Campus, we're hoping to grow the culinary program that's downtown, again, it's students and tuition that help to generate that revenue, so that's where we're vested. Once we finish these three buildings, we'll probably sit back and just reassess what we have, utilize the facilities we have to their fullest capabilities, and see where we're at going forward with the state and what we need to do. But I unders, I hear you, I, that's what we need to look at, those, those potential opportunities.
Well, I'm a music student, so that's kind of, like, that's a, a big deal, because when I've been visited and saw the concert on New Year's Eve, their hall is amazing.
Right.
They even, like, they also installed a bar, and I saw at least $3,000 to $4,000 in sales right there, on top of the event itself, so it's a working contract.
Right, we're thinking about that for the event center, it's preliminary, guys, just, but we are looking into that.
So if I understand correctly, the programs that you feel help the students get a job immediately afterward, can pay more to the program to, you're going to sacrifice more money from those programs, like, not just the automotive, but culinary? money from those programs, like, not, not just the automotive, but culinary, police enforcement, all those elective programs?
Well, we're hoping again to provide you with some financial assistance, but at the same time, we look at, if you graduate and, you know, if you graduate two, three years and you're employed, that you are going to be able to start repaying back much quicker than those students who are transferring to a four-year.
So have you estimated how many students will drop out of these classes once they realize they can't afford?
We have not, we're hoping that we can work with the students to help them to continue to afford the program.
I know, I'm the treasurer in the automotive club, and down there in automotive, we're, it's all a big family, we're all really close, and I know a lot of students that as of right now, they can barely afford. And with this increase, I really don't know if a lot of them could. It really is a struggle, especially with how much time that we spend back there.
Right.
As I've said before, it just, it would be really hard for a lot of students, and I don't know how many would end up dropping out because they couldn't afford it, especially with the 1.5 increases.
Right.
It's pretty big.
It is.
I just feel like, instead of that variable, it almost, I think for a lot of us, the solution seems a lot better to just go even across the board, everybody just pay the same. Even though they in the arts and the music might not make as much as us when we get out of here, it makes it a lot easier for us students while we're in here.
Even though I'm not in a career technical area, that, that kind of rate increase on, and, and, you know, people that are immediately going to go into the workforce, yes, so they, yes, they're going to immediately start earning money, you know, the rest of us are going to have a long-term career, I, I don't think it's unreasonable, the idea that the, that this were to get spread around back one step. Yeah, you know, a smaller increase across the board, to me, would seem a lot more realistic than just almost killing. Because to me, this, looking at this, this would potentially kill that, that area of the school.
So I guess for me, I see it as kind of a no-brainer, that if you're getting less income from the state, that you have to raise tuition. But have you thought about just raising like the costs on labs and things rather than lecture classes? Because your labs, that's where all your money's spent, that's where you're paying teachers more money to actually teach us longer courses, stuff like that. Lectures, you get three hours a week for a lecture class, that should be cheaper than a full lab, so do you really need the 150% increase on a lecture compared to a lab? Or if you could just, for the whole department, raise the cost on labs, such as like science and other things like that, besides the career and technical stuff, culinary thing?
Hi, I'm Patty Zuccarello, I'm the dean for career tech. And one of the things Dr. Mitchell was talking about earlier was, we have been looking at raising tuition in other areas, this is just the area that we're looking at first. And again, it's, as you referenced, when we're involved in so many programs that have a lab component, a clinical component, high equipment costs, you know, when you look at the cost per student at the college, it's career tech that's the most expensive to run. So we aren't looking at all of these other areas, this is the first proposal that we're considering for differential tuition. But depending on what happens with the state, it may end up that we have to look at some of those other areas too.
Good. Would you be able to do it just for the lab classes over compared to lecture? Does that kind of spread out how much, like say your ag or culinary, all those people are paying to, they have, you know, say, two lab courses, okay, so you get 150% increase on two classes, that's not a bank breaker. Say you get all six or seven of your classes, 150% increase, I mean, you're basically adding another, what, $1,000, $1,500 bucks a year, so, I mean, that's going to hurt you.
Yeah, so then you're suggesting for the classes, so like in ag, if there's a, a lecture class that doesn't have a lab component, but that wouldn't have differential?
That's kind of what I was saying.
Say, in regard to, I hear that you're saying that the students, when they graduate from the program, they start maybe $20, $20 an hour or higher. In point of view, when EMS students, when we graduate, we only make $9 an hour as an EMTV. And if we are, if we get the firefighter EMS degree, we have to wait, the waiting list for like two to four years to get hired in the fire department. So it will affect us a lot, because if we can go, the overall purpose that I'm here is to get my EMS degree, but if I can go to any outside hospital and get just my EMTV license, I will be making the same amount of money that if I get my EMS degree, and I'll be paying less money for just the EMTV license.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. We'll take all this back and reevaluate and make some decisions, albeit very difficult.
It's possible, we already talked about this, but are there any specific types of scholarships or financial aid, people in technical programs that might help make this a process?
Right, and I don't know those off the top of my head, I know we have many scholarships and that, but I would encourage you to reach out, with or without the tuition increase, I would encourage you to reach out to our foundation office, resource development, or check out the website, check out the website. Because like I stated earlier, there are so many scholarships that are left unclaimed at the end of the year, that I don't think the students even realize, you know, what's out there, what's available. And you know, if you have questions to, reach out to your student government representatives, share with them your input. I know Kathleen DeWong is your, is our student trustee, and she'll be asked by the board to come back with her, you know, with her recommendation, what she's hearing from the students, so definitely reach out to SGA.
I understand that you're going to have to make some very hard choices in the future, and I don't blame you for that, whatever decision you decide to go with, I'll understand completely, and I will accept it.
Okay.
It's just that I'm afraid that if you point the direction of your technical services, you cut the funding, you raise the prices, Jolly Junior College is one of the top schools in the nation for automotive. If you cut that off, I feel like that'll, that'll automatically increase that you'll get less students coming to you back, because that's the only reason why I came here, was for the, for the, I mean, not just me, culinary, or any other technical students, I, I just know that we're barely, we're barely getting by English program, and we're going to go through it. I understand that you feel that if we graduate, we'll get jobs right off the bat, but some, they're suggesting that we go on to SIU for another two years, now being an increase of 50, we're in there, we just won't have.
Right.
So if you increase it here, we won't be able to have it, we won't be able to have a job, and holidays will go, but of course, so I'm just asking that you please consider evening out the rate of tuition throughout all your classes, instead of just the career technical institute.
Okay. No, I appreciate that.
That was one of the things that brought me to JJC, actually. It's not because it's community college, it's not because they have free programs, it was because I knew what I was paying for. And if we start cutting the things that we actually want as an education, that's what's going to make us unreliable. And I'm not saying that school's going to become unreliable, what I'm saying is though, I, I mean, it all depends on the wibbly-wobbly, you know, numbers behind it, but I still, I still believe that I'm paying for what I'm getting. I've never once walked out of JJC going, "Oh, man, that was a waste." So I feel, even though on, on paper, the numbers seem a little weird, I would say a lot of people here, they walked out here going, "Man, I definitely got my money's worth out of everything that JJC offered." Even through the financial aid and scholarship situation, so a lot of people are actually qualified for those, some people have taken advantage of those as well. So like I said, I might be, I'm, I'm, I'm neutral on the subject, but it's one of those where you have to actually take a look at it, and not how, you know, it hurts your pocketbook, but what it would do in the long run for the next students that come in. If they're going to look at the program and be, you know, "Oh, it's gotten pricey, but is it worth it?" It's going to be like, yes, it's top tier, it is, it is something special. So I, I'm actually, you know, I, I've gotten help from some financial aid services, but I've also paid out of pocket. Would that be more? Yes, but like I said, I've never felt like I've wasted a penny, so.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you very much, and again, reach out, you know where my office is, SGA, and let them know, we want to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you.